And I'd like to call a special meeting of the Hinkley Township Order Trustees to order on Monday, September 22, 2025, at 4:03 PM for the purpose of a work session. Call the role Asher.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here. Rusty?
The purpose of this work session is to begin writing the newsletter that will be mailed out to all of the homes next month. So we can get started. Cindy has provided a hard copy for the zoning and comprehensive plan update to both of us. Did you send it electronically so you can do a copy and paste?
I'll do, yeah, I've got it here so that, you know, you can visually see it and then update it and then I can send it.
Right. We all got here like, we all got here like, right, the meeting's starting, let me get a pen. I have things printed up, but I don't have a pen. Okay. So just the welcome. I would say it's just going to be a standard welcome like the last one. And as a reminder that they can register for the electronic. But Jack pull up his template.
So this is our second annual print.
It's our second annual print. Is that the first one?
No, I'm just looking at the last one we just did.
Oh, the quarterly.
Just, yeah. Yeah, I don't know where the.
I think Jack saved the original one. I don't think we.
It's like it's not, I don't have the website. Only 2025 newsletters are up there.
This was the print edition.
This was the print edition, yes. I'll have her add.
Do you want to change your intro at all? Obviously, it's the 25.
Could, you know what? To make it easier, could you email that to us so that we're looking at what you're looking at?
Last year's?
That was the last year of the print. Would you like a copy of it? What we're looking at? Okay. Or you can just.
It's printed, I was gonna say.
Yeah, printed is fine.
Yeah.
It's last year's. There we go. Got these.
You have a print?
Yes, two. And then do you need to cut, you've got the quarterly ones then on your computer, Jack?
I do.
Cindy, do you want the, you've got the quarterly on yours also on the website?
On the website.
Okay. I will email you a bunch of pictures I have in my phone also. Trying to remember to get pictures this time. Printer's going very slow today.
So am I.
Well, it's Monday. Did Matt or Dave give you anything for department updates?
Yeah.
Matt Payne?
Didn't see him. Did you?
Did Dave give you anything?
No, Dave snuck out the door.
Okay. So we can get from them and add.
Yeah, I have already asked Mike to give me an update on the pavings that were done.
Okay. And what slated?
Yeah.
For 2026?
Yeah.
Oh, is it hot topic? I will say we had in this newsletter, Mr. Pearl pointed this out to me actually. You know, we have a header for the police department and zoning and fire. There is not any type of a heading. Service just kind of flows right in. So getting some kind of a header so that that would stick out a little bit more.
They did put one in the service online, I think. Yeah, I did. I put the Hinkley Township seasons. That's basically, that's all it's on the side of their truck.
Yeah, maybe just add service then under it. Because he's, it is in there. I don't know if you saw that. It's just the red. It's like what it looks like on the side of their truck, but it really doesn't pop out that it's service. So maybe if we just add in smaller letters underneath it, service. It does look, you know what? I don't normally print it up, though. I just read it on the website. So it does pop a little bit more print, but that only happens once a year. So while we increase our budget. Thank you, ma'am.
Look at that.
Okay. So well, okay, so we'll skip the fire and police for right now. And you're going to fill in the service because Mike gave you all of that.
Yeah.
So just scrolling down then, I think that we should. Cindy has provided the zoning.
So we'll go put it there.
Yeah, read, read that through. Make sure it's understandable. And I'll, I can email you the document.
That would be great.
Yeah, emailing would probably be so he can do a copy and paste.
Yeah, okay. You want it emailed also.
No, I don't need an email because I'll get the copy Jack has. He sends us the draft.
I'm sure you should have it.
Some of this stuff on the outside.
Yeah, comprehensive plan going there too.
Yeah, read it through before you put it in there. Make sure.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, but I was, I don't know, I don't know what we can take out, though. It's important. It's probably the most important thing that we are doing.
It is. So. And there's been a lot of progress over the last six months, five months. And plus, we got to talk about our next steps there, like our public information sessions and what's going to happen after that. And also our approach that we're doing it ourselves. So just read through it, make sure.
Yeah, I read through it.
It's fine.
I was trying to figure out what we can cut. I don't think it's all very important, relevant information.
I would rather trim some other things instead.
I agree. I agree. And I was already seeing what we can trim off of here. Because remember what's going to be different in this one? We're also going to have that insert for the Rump key opt out. And just the 2026 information for Rump key. So we're not going to have to include that, which has its own heading from last year. So.
It's a topic.
Right. We can probably take out the technology piece.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to, we need, the comprehensive plan is more important. You know, technology that March continues and we've been reporting that quarterly. It's not.
And, you know, a picture paints a thousand words, but maybe less pictures.
Yeah.
Just have like maybe one smaller picture on each page so that it allows more content. The content is what's really important. Yeah, no, there, I don't see anything that we can take out of here.
Want this under zoning or you want the zone heading?
I want it. I think it should have its own.
Yeah, that's its own heading because it's not part of.
In bold.
Because, right, it's its own topic. It's not really, it's not a department. It's, it's its own committee. So it should report separately.
About a better word than whipped out?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, I'd come up with a different.
Adjective?
Verb.
The action, isn't it? Adjective is description.
Open them.
Yeah.
Short meeting, shortness. She could come up with a different word. That's fine.
Creative. Might be a little bit more.
Creative. Well, it's the spontaneity as if it was a very, you know, when you're planning something for 10 years and you spend six months, somebody else manufactures for you. Different than.
The only thing I am going to say with both of these is you've got the website linked in here twice and.
Well, they go to different places.
I get that they go to different places, but maybe just, I mean, the website is very easy to navigate now.
Well, yeah, but it's to explain it, you know, I mean, just easier to give the URL.
I'm just, I'm looking at his ad copy and like it takes it down by another whole line.
I know. Well, I know.
I think odds are someone looking for this would just type in the Hinkley website and then try to find it. I don't know if they would type all of this. I mean, I wouldn't. Maybe I'm not the average.
Since you're here as a, like I provide the URL so you can go directly to the content. Or would you, would you find it sufficient to just say, visit our website? Is that what you're saying?
If it was electronic, you can click on the link. So it takes you right there. Yeah.
If you're interested, you know how to get to the website.
Right. And when we put this on the website, because this will also be visible on our website, we can insert the URL in the website.
Okay.
But.
Right.
You know, so that when it gets shared to social, they'll be able to click on that URL. But in the actual print, it's not like they can touch it with their finger.
Well, you know, technology advances.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet.
Right? Don't you have that?
It's mushy.
Scanned, digital scan thing, you know, with your finger now? You don't even need your phone for a QR code.
Jack's completely ignoring you.
That's because he's.
Lost in the mesh.
Lost in the mesh.
It's mushy.
Sometimes things get mushy.
I don't know if you heard that conversation. We're just going to take out the URL on both.
You'll have to update the next sentence on the on the conference plan one.
The first task has resulted in a draft of those results, which is available at our website.
And then this link also contains meeting minutes, agendas and meeting videos.
Take that whole sentence out.
Okay, but in the interest of transparency, I just, you know, to get people to go to the website so they could, it's more than just the results of the first task. It's also just to review meeting minutes, agendas and videos if they want.
Take out that one. Where is it with the comprehensive plan? You already took it out?
This one up here, yeah.
You already took it out? Okay.
This link. And this says link, though.
Right. So we have to adjust that. How about on our website, comma, which also contains, and then delete the link.
Well, it says.
Results.
Website and also contains. How about that?
Yes. Okay. Fiscal office is next. Which I would say we can take all that out and maybe.
This, it just started. Please join us in welcoming. You want to? Want to say something or?
Please join us. Yeah. Probably want to talk about the fact that he is in or being audited right now. Our annual audit. So it doesn't.
Richard joined us after the departure of.
Yeah, I think so.
Richard joined us following the, saying joining twice. I don't know. Help me out.
I can't see.
Richard, something.
I would take from, this is going to be where we have to keep it. Like, these are the parts that we're going to have to cut down for the comprehensive plan. So I would just say, please join us in welcoming our new fiscal officer, Richard Fay. And maybe, you know, Rich is a certified internal auditor and certified fraud examiner. Like something about his qualifications that sum up, you know? Yeah, that was from the quarterly, you know, maybe sum up something like that.
And then do you want to make mention of Martha's passing?
I do not think Martha would like that, to be honest with you.
Right.
What do you think? I, I don't, to mention Martha's passing, I do not think that she would want that. Yeah.
Okay. Images, qualifications and.
Because that was our last, the newsletter that we mailed to everybody last year. You know, we said, we said goodbye to Martha after her 20 years of service to the township.
True.
It was, you know, she she didn't want to be discussed why she lost. So I would say I don't think we should mention again.
He's a certified internal auditor and a fraud examiner and brings much to the position with over 45 years of experience in accounting.
It just sounds like typo in our last quarterly.
Stop reading the last ones.
Just, how is it we review these things and like we don't see the typos?
It happens.
It's amazing. Do we want to, and you know what? Maybe just allow a couple of lines here. Maybe Rich wants to add a couple of things in here about the 2026 budget, about the audit process that's happening right now. So maybe just save a couple of lines for him to add. Because we didn't have anyone to add to it from the fiscal office last year.
Right.
All right. Well, last year we had the single hauler waste collection update. We don't even have to have that because there's going to be a separate insert.
It's going to be right in there.
Right. The technology. I don't, I don't really think we need, yeah.
Senior hollow goes away. Yeah, technology.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, look at this. We were talking about it last year, replacing its old phone system. That was a year ago we were talking about and we're, where are we at with that now, Cindy?
Yeah.
By the way, did you talk, did you get touch base with Mike's role?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Arba, then that's.
Don't use Arba anymore. I would mention the bicentennial. You know, we celebrated our bicentennial. And that can lead into the new sign, the new sign that was necessary to be replaced.
The electronic.
The electronic sign.
Which did we, we, did we mention that?
We talked about the sign.
Must have been not the last.
It's in the end.
In the end.
It says, and the old wooden message.
The old, yeah, the old fire station. The old wooden message board.
Oh, but I thought we did in one of our other quarterly, obviously not the last one, but the one before. Did we have a picture of it?
Of the sign?
I'm just going to go look at.
No. We do not have a sign. We do not have a picture.
I don't believe so. That might be a good picture to put in.
I, I have pictures. I'm going to send you pictures because I have pictures of the sign. I have pictures of Bicentennial Plaza. I have pictures of the military banners. I have pictures of movie night and I have pictures of the bicentennial.
Okay.
I would like to, I mean, the timeline doesn't really photograph well. Get a picture of the timeline. Just say, just stop in and see it for yourself.
Oh, yeah.
I also have a picture of our new Hinkley sign that was donated.
This guy?
So I will send you pictures that can be thrown in there. All right.
Do you have something you want to say about it too? I mean, if I'd like to acknowledge a donation.
Yeah.
Can we do that? Yeah.
Yeah.
It last the, earlier quarterly, we mentioned that it was installed in February, the sign. And it's purposely one of our pictures.
Right, but the quarterly goes to such a small amount of people that, yeah.
You can pull from that. That's what I mean to say.
Oh.
That you can pull from that.
Well, maybe we should talk about, well, he's going to do service. We should talk about the fact that we're doing the mowing now, the money that that's saving.
Yes. Hmm, yes.
Did you say that was the spring, that was first quarter?
Um, March. The sign, it was March. In other news, it was the first thing, should be.
Oh, I see it, okay. Is that installed in February? Oh, because it was supposed to be November last year.
Supposed to be.
And it was not until February.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Time flies.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I think it's worthy of talking about the military banner program, the pilot year with it. And it was, um, thanks to the donation of a resident.
And that we had over 30 participants.
I can't tell if you're being.
That's a wide angle view.
It, the wall looks pregnant.
No, it looks like it's on the corner, doesn't it?
It, well, that too. It's bulging.
It's two, the numbers look a little different. I'm back.
Okay, um. I mean, do you want to just do a cut and paste from this? The township's new electronic message sign was installed in February at the intersection of Route 303 and Ridge Road in front of the administrative building. The purpose of the sign is to communicate relevant township information to our residents in a timely manner. Notifications for three different township meetings will be color-coded to make changes easier to read.
Yeah.
Just do a copy and paste on that one. That was from the March.
The spring.
Yeah, spring. And it's right under in other news.
I do a question, a word easier to read.
Really?
Yeah. Why, why is it color-coded? So you can recognize it.
So you recognize the difference between the boards?
Yeah, but it's not easier to read.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, are you an English teacher? Isn't right.
Well, you don't have to have that last sentence at all. Just talk about the purposes.
We just said it's color-coded.
Okay. Take out easier to read. Go on.
Hold on. Yeah.
I didn't mean all of it, just the easier to read. Unless you don't think we need notifications for the three different township meetings will be color-coded. Period. He took out the whole sentence.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't know how important that is.
Okay, never mind, leave it out, Jack. Okay.
Okay.
Um, we want to talk about our military banner.
Yeah, so you could.
Pilot program.
Take, take the June article. And just, um, say, just start out the inaugural interprogram launched before Memorial Day. Had a response, you know, had a response.
That summer?
Summer.
Did a, uh, had over 30 participants.
Did you find it?
That other news, where was that?
Uh, from the summer.
Yeah, it right there, I think.
Oh, okay, you want, am I taking this whole piece?
So, yeah, well, not the whole part. I would say the inaugural program had, um, had over 30 participants. The saying hasn't had, had a tremendous response. Had over 30 participants. And that the banners are displayed along the walkways flanking the bicentennial clock plaza.
And over 30 participants. Then.
And then the banners are displayed along the walkways flanking the new bicentennial clock plaza.
Just bicentennial plaza and that clock.
Just played along the walkways spanning.
Bicentennial plaza. And.
And what?
The administrative building.
Oh, that's right, they are at the end, okay. And at the administration, the administration.
It's not a walkway.
Garden. We could call it the electronic sign plaza. And then those service members who lost their lives in combat will continue to be displayed at Veterans Memorial Park across the street.
They'll look at me and talk, those.
Though, I'll take the next whole sentence, those service members who lost their lives in combat action will continue, let's say, keep that sentence.
Um, and then I would just end it with, this program was funded. Or donated, thanks to.
Generacy.
The generosity.
Of a Hinckley resident.
Yeah. This program was funded.
Through the generosity of. The resident.
What do we want to talk about? Because we talked about, um, in the electronic, we talked about the improvements to town hall.
Mm-hmm.
Do we even mention those, because I'm trying to think of how we incorporate this sign. You know what I mean, that the sign was donated by a resident.
By a risk, for better view, viewability at our meetings. A, um, a new sign was.
Or is it not? Is it not newsworthy?
Probably not.
Probably not. Yeah. I just don't want to talk about one donation and not another donation, but.
Yeah, but we're talking about.
Right.
Veterans.
Right.
Am I changing something?
No.
Good.
Nope. Um. Do we want to talk about, um, do we want to say anything about the bicentennial? Or, I mean, the township didn't, that was bicentennial committee, but.
I would say we would like to thank the bicentennial committee for.
Okay.
So it was a wonderful event.
Well, yeah. Um, what about including, uh, I don't know, I don't know that you can make it a short paragraph, but I continue to receive questions and phone calls and people just out and about asking about annexation. Do we want to talk about that at all?
What would you want to say about it?
What are some of the questions you get?
How do we stop it? How can the township stop future annexation? I, it's, I mean, it's valid question. And I technically I technically, we can't, like, unless I'm mistaken.
Well, right, I mean, a property owner has the right to request that. So, um, you know, there's a process defined by Ohio Revised Code as to how that happens. The standards that are set are really, um, not very, very expansive or extensive, I should say. And, um, it's, you know.
I mean, the rules are not in favor of the townships.
No, and it's very, it's a very rampant thing that happens in a lot of communities where, you know, neighboring municipalities own a gobble of land from the township that's next to them. It's, it's an Ohio Revised Code thing that really merits some updating to make it a little more. I don't know, say. Where circumstances really would be exigent that, you know, an annexation would benefit the property owner, but it's becomes a land grab, but I, you know, I mean, what can you say about that in a newsletter? I don't know, because now you're, we're shifting our focus from talking about what we're doing in the township to.
No, I agree, I just, it's, it's a question that is coming up and it's, you know, because people are concerned when they see it, what happened to Sharon, you know, Wadsworth continues to annex pieces of Sharon. Brunswick continues to annex pieces of Brunswick Hills, and now they've started with Hinckley and.
But it's the property owners that, you know, are making that request. I mean, Brunswick Hills is just chopped up because it's individual residential properties. Um, in other cases, it's, it's a developer who's doing that. I mean, but again, they're property owners. Sadly, there's nothing you can do to stop it, per se. You can challenge them, but, um, it's like I said.
You don't think it's worthy?
I don't, yeah, I, I don't see that you put something in here that's going to, anything that you put in here is just gonna drive questions that you can't really answer here, you know, that.
Because the real answer is talk to your state rep to get the Ohio Revised Code changed. I mean, that's the real answer to stopping the annexation.
Okay. I, there's just, there's so much misinformation about it and people continue to ask me, so that's why I brought it up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, we want to talk about, what did you put in there for the bicentennial?
Just so far, as I said, we'd like to thank the Hinckley Bicentennial Committee for all the work that was put in for the celebration of the Hinckley Bicentennial. The event was an enormous success and tended, enjoyed by many, well done.
Did I mention the fifth name?
They don't want to be named, no. They, they were part of the committee, they do not want to be named.
All right.
Um.
Trying to recognize.
I know.
It's, you know.
I know.
And it's outstanding that they, you know, view it as a committee work, so I appreciate that.
Uh, the other events, uh, I, do we want to talk about, um, the parades? Do we want to talk about the movie nights? Do we want to talk about, um, I, I mean, maybe start a new heading, um, community, you know, like a community tab, and that is talking about the parades we're going to be having, which is going to be when this newsletter is hitting mailboxes. It's going to be relevant for the drive-in movie. Um, the holiday decorating contest. And.
It's probably all for the rest of the year.
That's it for the rest of the year?
The holiday, the house decorating.
Yeah.
And would you say movie night, drive-in movie night?
Shred day, shred day will already be over with by the time they get this. Okay, I'll send you some, um, I'll send you a little blurb about, yeah.
Right.
Events, things like that. Um, so we'll get updates from our two chiefs. Which days was really big last year, I don't anticipate it being that big again this year. Um, so what we had on the one that we did last year was with the welcome kind of, um, bullets of what to, you know, what was in this edition. Um, so we can take out, we're happy to bring you the first print, I didn't, we can take all that out.
With that whole box on, welcome stay, anything?
Um, I, I keep welcome. Um.
Oh, you want to say we're happy to.
Happy, happy to bring the second annual.
Our second annual edition of our annual newsletter. Second annual edition of our print, printed newsletter. So.
And then you, you might would take out state of the township, that's inside you will find, um, information on, um, activities and projects of this year. And a glimpse into the future.
The remainder of the year, of this year.
Mm-hmm. And next, because you're gonna have road work. Keep the QR code there. Um, some highlights in this issue. Um. I mean, do we want to put in there, you know, some of the fiscal activities of this year? We've cut some costs on some things.
Well, that's one of the big things I'm gonna put in, in the service section is the
Mowing?
Yeah, purchase of mowers and the cost savings involved.
Um. Yeah, you were out of the room when I brought that up, um, the mowing, but then also, um, the phone systems.
Yeah.
What we're gonna be saving annually with the phone systems. What we are going to be saving annually by, uh, not relying on print media or, um, notifications. Um, that would probably. Um, that would probably be good to add into that fiscal area, so we can add that into whatever Rich gives us. Add that in. Maybe just put note annual savings. We're not typing anything.
We're looking.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Um. So back to that welcome, you can take off, um actually, single hauler waste collection bid. Um, I would put, um, rump key twenty twenty-six rump key information and opt out. Um. There's an insert, like, maybe mention there's, there's an insert in this for that. Or just leave it like that. Uh. Twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan kickoff. We're not actually calling it the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, right? We're just, it's the comprehensive plan.
We're having, it's really called comprehensive plan update. Um, so I would change it to say comprehensive plan update committee activity.
Okay. I think activity, not plural. And then take out the introduction of new township employees.
We have any?
Just Rich. Not really worth the bullet. Um. And I think that should suffice. I mean, if we have.
Be twenty-five fiscal activities?
Twenty twenty-five fiscal activities.
So we didn't really do quote-unquote a breakdown of activities last year. I mean, we spread the information throughout.
What do you mean?
Well, it says, last year it said breakdown of twenty twenty-four fiscal activities.
Right.
Like, we didn't have one section with just that. We had.
Right. No, I, I agree, and I think that it should be in this one.
Yeah.
So it should be under the fiscal office and so let Rich put in there what Rich wants to include, and then we can also include, um
The stuff that we've done.
The cost-saving measures that we've taken this year.
Right.
And I think that is a good start.
So you said fire and police are gonna provide the assistance soon?
Yes. Cause I want to have this to the printer, um hopefully by the end of the week, realistically, probably Monday. Already made the resolution.
Right, we did that, right?
Yeah, so they're just gonna be waiting on us on to send it. Uh, Lynn, I believe, sent the opt-out form to the prosecutor just to have him
Mm-hmm.
give his approval on that. I will follow up with that tomorrow. Um, that's it. We got, we did get the opt-out. We got the rump key and the opt-out to one double-sided page. So that will just be an insert. Yes, I think I, I think you guys were copied on that. So I think that's a good start. Um, we'll get everything from the other department heads and do a little tweaking and proofreading, and I think that's a wrap.
Um, any of the pictures you've got them?
I have them.
Okay.
I will have them, and Jack, you will have creative freedom to make it work.
Yeah.
Tim Gunn. Isn't that Tim Gunn?
Wow.
Make it work, people. Anything, um, you think that we are missing throughout all of our meetings? Anything important from the year?
Thank you, God.
We got it? Okay. Anything else?
No.
The work session. We can talk about anything else.
Well, um, we have to um adopt the cybersecurity policy.
Yeah, I saw that.
So actually, finally, um, a sample policy came out.
It was today.
Just today. And since we're meeting tomorrow, um, I'm going to try and modify it to be applicable to us. But I don't know that I'll be able to have prosecutor review in time for a meeting, but if, if, um we would be considering it pending, you know, any comments from prosecutor that would get us in compliance to have something passed for this one. So I will try and have something together for my own, right?
Okay, I know what I want to include on here, Jack. We should, um, update also that our meetings are resuming next, next week. Our meetings are resuming the normal schedule of the first and third Tuesday.
You want to include that where?
I'll include it in my portion.
Of?
Events.
Newsletter?
Newsletter, yeah.
I'll already be back on that schedule by then.
Right, by one meeting. I mean, I don't know. Do you think it's not important?
No.
No? You don't think anybody really actually pays attention?
And, and we said in the prior. We said in the prior.
There's a thousand words right there.
Right there.
What about, should we mention, um, that the first meeting of November will be in the senior room because it's election day? In case. Mr. Pearl.
We, we just told him.
Okay. All right. Well, all of my ideas are being poo-pooed, so I'm just not gonna contribute anymore. I'm gonna take my ball. Okay.
All right.
But.
Nothing further. Move to adjourn at five PM.
Second.
Second by Ash, real law in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.